Everybody, let's go ahead and start the regular meeting of the Daily City Council. November twenty seventh. To watch the live telecast, you can go on youtube.com/dailycityvideomeetings or on the web at www.dailycity.org/agendas, or you can watch it on Comcast Channel twenty seven. Would you please all rise and help say the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
I'm present. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, first up under Presentations is the DCPLA grant to the Daily City Public Library. And presenting is Tricia Devera, the Board Vice President of DCPLA. Good evening, Ms. Devera. Nice to see you.
Me too. Good evening, everybody, and the entire City Council. Tricia Devera, Vice President of the Daily City Public Library Association. Thanks so much for having me this evening. DCPLA has been busy this last quarter of the year, and we're excited to be awarding a grant to the Daily City Public Libraries. This grant is given to us by the town of Colma in the amount of five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. These funds will be used to purchase early education technology that supports literacy in children ages five and under. Education begins with curiosity as a child. When curiosity is fostered and developed in school-aged children, it leads to a hunger for knowledge and encourages curiosity, and the cycle continues. Daily City Library branches provide computers, tablets, and wonderbooks that are catalysts for increased curiosity. The parents are encouraged to participate with the child. Each week, there is a tech one-on-one course for the families that is promoted through the library calendar, which allows the librarians to help the families in more specific ways. With that said, the five thousand two hundred dollars, four thousand two hundred and fifteen will be used for AWE Learning Computer. It's an award-winning education. Currently, throughout the Daily City Library Branches, there are seven of these computers that were purchased many years ago. And these are in popular demand, and many families come to the library with the main purpose of using these computers. In recent months, at least two of these computers have become unreliable. And with this, the amount, the library will be able to replace one of the non-functioning computers. The remaining two thousand and one dollars will be used to purchase five Launchpads. Launchpad tablets have learning applications in both English and in Spanish. Children are able to read along with books, test their knowledge, and build a solid foundation for preschool and kindergarten. Currently, the library has a few of these, and adding more to the program will allow for greater reach, as there is often a waitlist for these Launchpads. We are grateful to the city of Colma for the funds received. However, our libraries are always in need for additional funding, as you may know, to support any and all of our materials that they house in the libraries. So, to our Daily City community, we are accepting any donations to dcpl.org to continue providing the needs for our local libraries. Our libraries exist to support and better the community, young and old. Thank you so much for having me this evening, and happy holidays from DCPLA.
Thank you, Ms. Devera. Why don't you stand by? I'm sure we have some comments and questions for you. Go ahead, Ms. Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It's just a delight, once again, to see you, Vice President of DCPLA. And really, also want to say thank you to Colma, who is really right next door to us as a region. As we all know, that our libraries are utilized from everyone around our city. But it's really amazing to see just how, what the dollars are being used for. You mentioned technology, really providing access to those, and even giving training for that. So, I just wanted to say thank you again, and I want to say thank you to the whole team for continuously just being amazing and always just bringing resources to our Daily City Public Libraries.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And also, being out there in the community. And for those of you watching, I think that was a call-out to support Daily City Public Libraries.
I always have to have a plug.
You know, tomorrow is Giving Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
And so, you know, our libraries are definitely a precious gem in our neighborhoods and communities. So, it's Giving Tuesday. I know that you're saying support.
Yes, dcpl.org. Yes, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Dr. Rod?
Tricia, thank you for coming through again. I was listening to a podcast the other day about how libraries are some of the most sacred spaces in our cities that hold not just, it's not just books, right? It's like the relationships they have with staff, the programs that they provide. And that's what creates the sacred relationship between the community and its libraries. So, once again, thank you to town Colma, and also thank you for everything that you do for our city and our community.
Thank you for your support.
Go ahead, Ms. Giovanni.
Well, here we are. You're always the giver, right? So, what I want to say is, I don't know if you have an envelope with you, but you know how they do it? It only costs twenty dollars to be a member, and I encourage everyone, including every elected, everyone out there. Of course, always giving more is always the best, but the annual membership really goes a long ways. And it's all about the numbers, like, you know, sometimes the smaller donations, and people can't give that. But what it gives back is so much more to our community, as you saw. Like, I even saw when we were at the, at the library at the John Daly. Like, we think about the visionary, like, yes, I went to the South San Francisco to their new library as well. And then my head starts to go, where can we put a Makerspace? Where can we put, you know, like, how can we redesign this? Because we have great spaces, and we have multiple libraries. So, I'm always thinking, and I'm sure Denise and Shayla, everyone's like, okay, so, we know we can do this because of about the three D printers and the, and like, as you say, and then we already are ahead in some things, like checking out the laptops for the seniors. And then when our great librarians are creating these great events, and they're teaching elders and those that need to know about technology, they're always available. When you come in the door, they greet the families and the children, creating programs. And then the people ask for the programs, and the people can't believe that. They actually listen. I said, yes. I said, that's what the Measure Q funds are. That's why Victoria, DCPLA, Patricia, everyone is working so hard to make this, not just from the COVID stance, but this is like Dr. Rod was saying. This gives so much more. Our libraries are a sacred place for everyone, all ages. And there's so much more we can do. But, you know, your mind starts going, oh, I'd like to have a star thing for the children so they can have a reading time, and, you know. But we can get there. I have faith in the community. And go, everybody, if you can't go online, I'm sure there's a way also to get in touch and also through our City Manager's Office and to you as well, for those that are not able to donate online. It is not just Giving Tuesday, but we can all give something, like during the holiday, and where would a better spot be? And then come in yourself and learn what it's like. Things are evolving and keeping up with the times because of DCPLA, because of Shayla and the great librarians that we have and our employees. That's, that's what they do. So, and they do it so well, and we're blessed. Thank you to all the council members, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and the town of Colma. They're always giving and supporting quietly. They're very humble and generous. And I know that they are able to, you know, we're community partners, and that's what we should be, is working together for the goodness of the community.
That's correct.
And you guys are a prime example of that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other comment? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Good evening, Ms. Devera.
Good evening.
Always a pleasure to see you and.
Likewise.
Thank you. Anyone from DCPLA, we are so grateful and we are so thankful. And just to be redundant again, I first of all would like to thank the town of Colma for their generous gift for the DCPLA. As everyone was speaking, I was online here, and I said, what's AWE? And I was looking as to find, to find out more, and it's a type of learning for kids.
Yes.
And when you said to replace one computer, I'm just hoping that they're going to do their investigation and see if they can get more bang for the buck, because just getting one is not going to do it.
It's not, yes.
And hopefully.
But it's better than none. I have to be thankful for that.
I completely agree. Better than nothing. So, again, thank you all for the work you continue to do. And it's always, again, indeed a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, forgive me for staring at you.
Uh-oh.
Every time I see you, I just, I think of Tita or Linda and, and what she meant to me, what she meant to this community. And I just see so much of her in you. And it's just, it's wonderful how you've carried the ball with, in her legacy. And with all the work that you do, what you've done, and it's just been really, really a joy to see. Because I remember when she was taking you around, and, and it was, man, I'm just so grateful that you're, you're still very involved, like you were. And we miss you at the Library Commission. But your, your work, I hope you've had a chance to go to her park. I know the Vice Mayor goes there frequently.
Yes, yes, with her grandson, yes.
Yeah, so, thank you for everything that you do. Thank for the City of Colma. And because of your great work, our libraries are much better today.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, take care. Okay, that's, that's it we have for presentations. Let me go on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to add something for the record.
Okay.
That, where it says at the beginning of the public speakers, I believe that there was just a small oversight that Dr. June Valera also, for the record, spoke that evening for public comment, who, I don't, I'm paraphrasing, said he was a voter in Daily City. He's the only one that could certify any vaccines in the county. He's responsible for those through the Lions Club and to oversight at every site in the county. And then he's been doing a lot of this in Daily City for fifteen years, and that he also collaborates, is looking forward to collaborating with the Masons, the Knights of Columbus, and continuing to do that. And then he emphasized and made sure that we know that he's, it's his signature that, that belongs for the approval of the vaccines. Thank you.
Okay, any other modifications or corrections? All right, hearing none with that modification. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes with the modifications.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved. Let's go on now to the approval of our general agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Um, uh, motion to approve agenda.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Public appearances or communications? I have speaker cards, but not on, in general, public appearances or communications. So, unless there's any written, no. I think you guys are on number eight. You're on general? Okay, come on up. What's your name?
Jonathan.
Jonathan, let me see, like, excuse me. Jonathan Jeremiah? Oh, there you go. Sorry about that. Come on, here we are.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jonathan Jeremiah. I'm a NorCal Carpenter rep out of Local Twenty-Two Carpenters, but I grew up here in Daily City, California. Went to FDR Fernando, but then I ended up at Terranova. Hit a rocky patch, and ended up at Cerro Monte Del Rey. But I've been in the union right after that, and now I'm a rep. But today, I'm just here to remind you guys about the area labor standards, which include healthcare, apprenticeship, and local hire. Healthcare should be accessible for all workers. We cannot have our communities not seek medical attention because their employers does not provide healthcare benefits. Apprenticeship programs are important, providing a pathway for minorities, women's, and at-risk youth in the construction industry. Also gives the working-class citizens the skills and craftsmanship to build any project. And also, by hiring locally, ensures that our citizens have more time to spend with their families and being more involved with their communities, instead of losing valuable time and commuting long hours. These standards should be common, you know, not a burden on anyone. And I believe that it should be implemented on any job that involves construction in Daily City. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public appearances or communications? None? Okay. Let's go on now to the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that any council members wish to pull? Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni.
Uh, just number three, please.
Number three. Anything else?
For information.
Uh, item number five.
Number five. Anything else? Hearing none? Okay, so just three and five. So, can I get a motion to approve number four and six?
Motion to approve number four and six.
Can I get a second?
Glenn Sylvester, second.
Second, all right. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. Four and six are approved. Now, let's go back to number three, which is the request to use of federal asset forfeiture funds to purchase True Narc handheld narcotic analyzers for the Daily City Police Department. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Before you this evening is a request to use federal asset forfeiture funds to approve the purchase of two True Narc handheld narcotics analyzers for use by the Daily City Police Department. Increasingly, police officers are coming across the synthetic opioid known as fentanyl during routine patrol duties. Fentanyl can be absorbed through the skin, as well as through inhalation or ingestion, and its potency has made it one of the most lethal substances in the narcotic world. As a result, the law enforcement industry has changed narcotics handling practices and issued Narcan to counteract potentially lethal exposure. The True Narc Narcotics Analyzer allows for substances to be tested without having to handle the substance directly, significantly limiting the potential for exposure. Fentanyl is being utilized in the uncontrolled manufacturing of narcotics, which can increase the potential for exposure to first responders. The Daily City Police Department has changed its narcotics handling procedures to increase safe handling of narcotics, with the understanding that a single fentanyl exposure can be lethal. Regardless of safeguards put into place, officers still need to manipulate unknown substances as part of general evidence collection in the field. The True Narc handheld narcotics analyzer utilizes Ramen Spectrop, Spectrop, I tried to say that a bunch of times, to test substances through clear containers, plastics, reducing the potential for direct exposure. The result is nearly instantaneous and can be used as a presumptive test for prosecution purposes. True Narc is a sole-source item through Fisher Scientific, and it is being utilized by law enforcement agencies and the Seminole County Crime Lab throughout the county. Funding is available using federal asset forfeiture funds, and the one-time purchase price for both True Narc devices will not exceed sixty-three thousand dollars. Staff is available. Provide any additional information desired by the mayor or the council members.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say I'm very happy to see this, because without going to details, before this, I mean, it was like even, I can't remember what it was, but for officers that have experienced even coming in contact, have actually collapsed. And they could have been mortal, but thank God it wasn't, and there was not even Narcan then, I believe, when those incidents occurred. And what was the smallest amount? People don't realize how impactful this is. Like, when they go to pull someone over, and then they have to do a search or whatever, or even if that, if they come in contact with that, even with the gloves, it doesn't, it can still, they can still come in contact, correct?
Uh, it can go through the skin and/or inhalation. So, any manipulation of the narcotic that causes it to release up into a powder-like substance can be inhaled and.
And that's it, yeah. And so, I just want people to know that law enforcement has really had a bad experience with that, and in full support of this, and you're very proactive. It protects the public, and then we can hopefully save lives. It's sad that this is happening everywhere. I know especially around the BART area, or not in particular, they're just there to pinpoint that, but they've had to come in contact with a lot. On the muni buses, PD and fire have had to do this as well. So, this'll, this'll definitely give us some kind of piece of safety for our officers when they're out in the field. So, I want to commend you for that, and to safety while they're out there, they come in counter with so much. And then if it's not one thing, it's fentanyl, then it turns into something else, right? I mean, something you always have to keep up with. So, just have to keep, that's what you do, and that's why you're our acting chief, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this up to this evening. I think we all know that there is a huge crisis up in California, around the nation with fentanyl. And so, the opportunity to have, you know, a safety piece towards our police officers and the public safety sta, you know, staff is so crucial. And I think this is definitely a no-brainer to ensure that, you know, this is pretty lethal, and a lot of people have died, and we need to also protect those that are in our community protecting us. So, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve, if I may.
Okay.
Second?
All right.
Uh, comment?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much. Well, actually, let's go there. What other drugs will this detect, other than fentanyl?
Pretty much every drug that will come in contact on the streets. I want to say it's about four hundred and sixty-five different substances that it can detect.
In the absence of having this device, how would your officers detect a particular type of drug? Say heroin or cocaine? How would they know the difference?
Given the answer, the introduction of fentanyl into the narcotic world, we no longer do presumptive tests like we used to do. We used to take some of the substance and dump it into a vial and break certain aspects of the vial, shake it up, and it would turn a certain color, but we no longer do that. It's now based on training, experience, and observational, and then we'll send it to the crime lab, where they'll test it there and notify us. But the crime lab is also turning to using True Narc for the same purposes that we are as well, because of the potential potency and lethality.
So, as you made mention in your statement, based, based upon the use of this particular device, it will save a tremendous amount of time, especially in investigative aspect. If you have probable cause to stop an individual and utilize this device, then it can save a tremendous amount of time, rather than having to send it to a lab and wait for results and subsequently charge the person. Is that correct?
That's correct. A lot of this started and initiated from an audit through the lab of the material that we have down there now. We have over six hundred samples that need to be tested. So, part of that's what the crime lab's trying to alleviate, and we're trying to help support that, to return some of that so we can test it in-house. And if there's any confirmation testing that's needed for further prosecution down the road, we can resubmit it at a later time. So, it saves us a step of submitting it for the initial presumptive test, and also saves potential financial costs associated to that.
Speaking of costs, what will, I know where the money's coming from, but what would be the city's impact as to how much they would have to put out?
Uh, it would be fully funded by asset forfeiture.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, all right. Can I get a motion to approve item number three?
Motion to approve item number three.
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none. That item's approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item number five, which is to reallocate the California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grant from the Margate Park Improvements Project to the Hillside Park Improvements Project. Dr. Chu?
Yes, good evening. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Members of the City Council, the item before you is to reallocate the remaining funds in the amount of three million nine hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars from the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grants. This was originally for the Margate Park Improvement Project. The request is to transfer the remaining funds to the Hillside Park Improvement Project. Uh, in May of two thousand twenty-two, the City Council did accept and appropriate the grant funds in the amount of four million dollars for the Margate Park Improvement Project. During the conceptual design of the improvements, it was determined that the funds would be better utilized for improvements out at Hillside Park instead of Margate Park. City staff did work with Assembly Member Phil Ting and the State Department of Parks and Recreation to transfer the remaining funds to the Hillside Park for the improvements at that location. The remaining funds is in the amount of three million nine hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars due to some miscellaneous cost that was done for Margate. So, in summary, staff is recommending that the City Council reallocate the remaining funds from the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grants, originally intended for Margate Park improvements, to the Hillside Park improvements. With that, staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Director Chu, go ahead, Mr. John.
Oh, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry.
She pulled it, yeah.
Do you have something?
No, go ahead, Vice Mayor. She pulled it.
I forgot, sorry. Go ahead.
First and foremost, Director Chu, I want to say thank you for all your work on this. Also want to acknowledge Assembly Member Phil Ting in support to, you know, the resources to enhance our parks. In regards to the specific item, you know, I just wanted to mention for the record that there was, you know, down the pipeline, that there is going to be an assessment to look at having this park as the Magical Bridge Foundation. So, for those of you that don't know, Magical Bridge Foundation ensures that the designs of parks are all accessible to all children, any age. So, there was a resident in Daily City that had reached out and asked if there was any way to have a Magical Bridge Park, because his son is autistic. And now, it's really research and looking into potentially having Hillside Park, because there is no all-accessible park in the northern county. You have to go down Apollo also. You have to go down south. And so, this is the first step in that. And so, I wanted to acknowledge that there is, you know, a desire to really support and ensure that our parks are all accessible, and we have a really unique opportunity to ensure that these playgrounds are accessible to all children. And so, I am definitely looking forward to see this come into fruition. Like it says, Magical Bridge redefines inclusivity by uniquely exploring the intersection of a universal design and community impact to produce outdoor spaces and programs that address both physical and social barriers. You know, and so, really look forward to seeing this come to fruition and having a park that's all-inclusive. So, I just wanted to say I know this is the first step, and this is also something that I know our community needs.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni.
I just want to say the same thing. Mr. Chu, I know that the money, and I know you worked really well with Naomi and Phil Ting's office, and that you guys would have had to do something before, there was a deadline, and then you guys did it. And I want to let people know that you guys worked hard to get that money transferred so that it would not expire, so that we would keep it, and for projects that hopefully in the future. Touring the one in Redwood City, but we don't, not sure yet. And then for those that are autistic, it's a really great program, like the one in Redwood City. If anybody wants to tour that, then it's, we'll see how large we can make it, or smaller, or if it's viable for here in Daily City. But we definitely need it, and if we get the funds, just like anything else, you know, we have the dream, we have the vision, but it's the implementation which you are great at following through. And, and thank you for making sure that that money didn't expire, and Assembly Member Ting moved, they moved quickly. So, I appreciate you guys working. You have a great partnership, and you work extremely well with their staff. You have a great partnership and you work extremely well with their staff. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none.
I think, Director.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Pickle.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you. Staff has done wonderful work getting to this point. We are close to an agreement for design services as we speak. I'd also like to point out that when we were working through the Margate process, Vice Mayor Manalo approached me and said that Magical Bridge was something we should pursue and we have pursued it and we are very close to an agreement with Magical Bridge as we speak.
Right. Very good.
Wanted to bring that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to make the motion?
Motion to approve item number five.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection?
Aye.
Hearing none, item five is approved. That concludes our consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Let's go on to public hearings. I'm going to jump forward to item number eight because this is going to be continued, but I know we have two speakers who wanted to talk about that. So let me just call it first. It's the, item number eight is the mixed-use condominium building at 2321 Geneva Avenue. And so staff is asking that that item be continued, but I know we have two gentlemen who wanted to speak, so I'll give you the opportunity to go ahead. Let me start with Nels Delander from NorCal Carpenters.
Good afternoon. My name is Nels Delander. I'm a field representative of the NorCal Carpenters Union of Local 217 San Mateo County. The project at 2321 Geneva Avenue is a good-sized development and has the potential to change lives for those who live here in this community. I raise the questions. Are the workers that are building this project going to get paid a living wage? Will they be receiving health care for themselves and their families? Will the project include any apprentices? And will this development going to hire locally within our community? Are we just thinking about this project, not the workforce that puts this buildings together? Adherence to these area standards on these kind of development protects the workforce and our community. I am not here for myself tonight. I am here for the workers that being taken advantage of project after project. The men and women who build this project should be paid fairly, should be trained properly through apprenticeships and should be, have some appropriate health care. Making profit on labor while the labor who builds these projects struggle to make a living is not right and should not be tolerated in any city. Let us not only think about these issues, but do something about it to make sure that these kind of mistreatments do not go on in Daly City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ben Ventura. Happy birthday. Good evening, honorable council members. I was gonna speak a little bit more at length on this agenda item, but I noticed that it's going to be continued, so I think I'm gonna refrain for, just for the sake of time. I do want to say that my name is Marja Abuboe. I'm an attorney with Lozodri and I represent La Yuna, the Laborers International Union of Northern America, Local Chapter 261, and its members who live, work and recreate in and around the city of Daly City. Yeah, we are following this project. We hope to have productive conversations and specifically we are interested in more environmental review of this project, especially considering the sensitive receptors located along Geneva Avenue. And we just want to make sure that this project is, I guess, echoing what Nelson said earlier, equitable and sustainable. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. So maybe I can get some direction from staff. Is there a date certain that you want this item continued to or do we just continue it? Yes.
No, there's no date certain. So when this item, if it were to reinitiate, then we would send out new notice.
Okay. Great. All right. I'll make the motion to continue. Can I get a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to provide some comments to staff. I received a staff report indicating that it would like to be continued, but I want to give staff a heads up if it is continued. I have some questions that I would like to be addressed at that time.
Okay.
As one gentleman came up and indicated, I'm going to ask about the environmental impact on Geneva. We have item number seven on the agenda tonight and I'm wondering how that's going to affect 2321 Geneva. In regards to item number seven, the current designation of the zoning, if we approve number seven, does that mean if the owners of 2321 does not want commercial, they'll have to apply for rezoning to residential? I don't know what the zoning is right now on 2321. That's a question I'm going to ask later. If you want to provide it now, it's.
You don't want to know? Okay.
Okay, it's okay. And I just received all pertinent bills pertaining to legislation that has passed from ABAG. I just received it today and I'm still going through the information and I'm going to ask, because I remember hearing this before, that community outreach was not necessary. And I haven't gone through everything yet, but that's why I'm going, that's another one that I'm going to question when this does come back to council for that. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, I know it's going to be continued, but I do want to acknowledge those that have spoken today around pushing for local hire and ensuring that there's union support for jobs because, you know, we know that in our housing element, we did push to ensure that whenever there is a development, that there is, you know, an initiative by those projects to reach out to the local unions as well as hire locally. I mean, that's something that I know we made a revision on and was instituted. And I think that goes alongside with that. I mean, when we have NorCal Carpenters here, I know that they had pushed for that and I know that as a council, we did include that in our housing element. I also wanted to say that I was able to visit the Pleasanton Apprenticeship and Construction Site and it was really amazing to see all of the, I mean, it's just technological wise, I mean, hands-on. Also want to acknowledge how NorCal is looking to improve having more women also within the trades. But I think that it's something, if we had put that in our housing element, I think that we need to also ensure that the developers are seeing what we have in our housing element and what we as a council have pushed for in as far as local hire and also reaching out to the union trades that we have locally in our area. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, just real short because I know you have a long list and I know, again, everybody's saying we want to hurry up and want to push you in the other way because we don't know what's date certain and I know it'll go out. But we all know that, that policy matters and that this is a policy that's been asked for even the last go-around with the, with our unions and our, with the language. I believe the language was sent out by Juan and yourself to, I believe, to our ECD department and to ourselves. So the language, we already have the language to implement it for making sure that there is, I think one of the biggest pushes these days is the medical because the medical is never, always, is definitely never in there. Even when we do project labor agreements or we just do agreements in general, that is a big piece of element that's there. And I know that it was sent to us. I don't have it in front of me, but I, I think that Michael and you maybe have to go obviously in search in emails. I'm sure they'll be happy to send it again, but the medical has been the thing that's been the biggest neglect. Of course, the other things are standard that we all support with the living wages and things of that nature, but I'm telling you that it has been the fight for that. And we as a city can be the leaders and have this done. I think South City has already done it. As a matter of fact, I know they have done it. So I think that we can take a stand and do a policy. Thanks, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All right, I made the motion to continue. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Objection. Hearing none, this item is continued. Now let's go back to item number seven, which is the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change Establishing a Commercial Mixed Use Zoning for Mission Street and Geneva Avenue. Ms. Mother said.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
Council members.
Evening.
Yes, this is a General Plan Amendment and Zone Change to establish a commercial mixed-use zoning for Mission and Geneva. The concept of developing a new commercial mixed-use zone along Mission Street and Geneva Avenue was initiated when the City Council adopted Daly's General Plan in 2013 and subsequent Rena 5 housing element in 2015. The Rena 5 housing element committed the city to an objective that would provide regulatory incentives for developers to construct higher-density mixed-use development along Mission Street and Geneva Avenue. In March 2020, the State Department of Housing and Community Development issued a grant award to the city of Daly City to help implement that objective. Shortly thereafter, the City Council selected Placeworks Consultants to develop a new commercial mixed-use zoning district for the Mission Street and Geneva Avenue corridors with the objective of promoting new multifamily housing and mixed-use development in these corridors. Since that time, Placeworks has held a stakeholder workshop and community meetings to discuss the potential regulations in the new CMU's district. In July 2023, Placeworks presented the Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District Standards to the council as well as test fit cases that detailed how the proposed regulatory concepts would work on actual properties in the Mission and Geneva corridors. The Planning Commission did review the proposed new CMU zoning district at their last meeting on November 7th and is forwarding a recommendation of approval to the City Council. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Bruce Brubaker, who the council has already received presentations from, and he'll walk us through the standards for the new Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Brubaker.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council and item. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you talking about this project. This is here in front of you tonight for approval and certification. So if someone could change the slides, I don't know who will be. Okay, thank you. The objectives for the project, and I'm going to give this presentation, which I hope is brief, and we are open for discussion after the presentation. The objectives, as Planning Manager said, is to create a new district to incentivize and streamline development on these two corridors, Mission and Geneva, and to adjust regulations that are standing in the way of getting new housing on these corridors. So we have worked hard to achieve both those objectives and I'll discuss the project now. Next slide. Placeworks is a lead consultant. We also had an architect on our team and a transportation planning firm. Next slide. The project area is Mission on the right and Geneva on the left. It includes all the parcels that are designated CMU in the general plan, but it does exclude some properties along the corridor that will not be redeveloped and those include things like Calpala's and the substation for PG&E. Next slide. The zoning, however, does not comply with the general plan at this point. It does not align. It is currently mostly light industrial parcel C1 throughout the corridor and the project is to bring the zoning in alignment with the general plan. Next slide. We've done lots of community engagement on this project in the more than a year that we've worked on it. We did have a presentation to you earlier this year in February. We had stakeholder meetings with architects and developers and property owners. We also came back to the City Council and talked about further work that we've done and development standards that were being developed at that point in the summer. And we held a community open house here in the chambers in August, which was fairly well-attended and got comments from the public. And all of those efforts fed into the development of the zoning and the general plan amendment that you have in front of you tonight. Next slide. One of the things that we did was case studies. We had our architect partner look at different similar or different parcels in different cities that led to development that was felt to be similar to what you could see happening on Mission and Geneva. Next slide shows some of the findings that came out of that. It's the type of development that we would likely see has to do with seven-story high buildings, up to 10 stories, about 100 units to the acre with zero or minimal setbacks from the street. These projects are being done everywhere throughout the state now and often within a few blocks of transit. The parking provided on the projects, it was found to be roughly a parking space per unit and that the larger sites could also give an opportunity for providing public open space as part of the project. We did another part of the project, which was test fit proposals. We actually looked at parcels on Mission and Geneva and the architect laid out developments that were feasible, that they felt would be feasible for developers to develop on these parcels. And there were, there were some conclusions that came from that effort. Next slide. Some of the findings is that the access for vehicles should be from the side or rear, that on the larger sites, publicly accessible open space should be provided. So in the standard says for sites larger than one acre. And that there should be a neighborhood transition where these projects butt up against residential R1 parcels at the rear. Next slide. So I will just briefly mention the general plan amendment that you have in front of you tonight. Basically, the only change to the general plan is a change to the land use map. There are some additional parcels along these corridors that are changed to CMU. Most of these are already CMU, but in the case of some parcels that were kept residential, this project actually recommends changing those parcels to CMU as well. Next slide. There is a zoning amendment in front of you that adds a new district, the CMU Commercial Mixed Use District, which would be a new section in the zoning code. There are several sections, I think you have a copy of the code itself in front of you, but there are many, there are several sections that include things like the purpose, the land uses that are allowed, height regulations, in this case it's 120 feet or 10 stories, lot area, lot width, lot coverage, yard requirements, usable open space requirements, which match other open space requirements that you have currently of 150 square feet per unit. Yard requirements, parking. Parking is basically now governed by state law on these corridors because they're high-quality transit corridors and state law says that parking restrictions or parking requirements of mandating parking spaces is not, no longer allowed for jurisdictions in high-quality transit corridor areas. And then we also have objective design standards that we've developed and we started talking with the council back in the summer about these design standards and you have a completed document in front of you tonight. Next slide talks about the zoning parcels that are changed. So all of these parcels that you see in pink have been changed from commercial to this new zone of CMU. Next slide. There was an environmental assessment done. There was an environmental assessment done. This assessment was an addendum to the 2013 General Plan Certified EIR. Now, you remember that these parcels were already designated in the general plan as CMU, so there really isn't a change. We're just adjusting the zoning. But we did do an addendum, which is what CEQA allows in this case. And the assessment did review all of the different topic areas that are typically done in an EIR, including the list that you see here, among others. We also sent letters to Native American tribes, which is required by CEQA, and there were no responses received to date on that. And then the conclusion is that none of the conditions analyzed in the general plan originally have changed. And the general plan and zoning amendments do not create substantially more severe or significant effects. So that is the conclusion of the environmental assessment. The objective design standards I'll briefly talk about, they are objective, meaning they do not have any gray area in them. It's, the standards say you shall do this, you shall not do that. They do not say you may do this, or it would be nice if you did that. They are really truly objective, which is what the city needs to have in place in order to either approve or deny a project ministerially. So at the, on the, at the time that this is adopted, the objective design standards will be the governing document for the corridor and corridor, the, the developers or property owners would move forward with a proposal, and they would be reviewed against the objective design standards. So some of the standards, I'll, I'll mention a couple. The sections in the book include site design, building design, context, and landscaping. Next slide. Site design, here's a couple examples of different, you know, there's a lot of standards in that section, but a couple of them have to do with the building location on the corridors and what the street frontage should be. So there's requirements about the dimension from the street that a building could set back. There's a maximum of 10 feet there. Also, the fact that a building should not be set back, should not be set back, or it should create a pedestrian-friendly street frontage along the corridor. And that corners where you have an intersection corner should be enhanced to give a better kind of urban design for the corridor and allow for a more attractive street. Next slide. Some other standards for building design include things like active ground floor frontage to ensure that it is pedestrian-friendly along these streets. And there's other standards about building design that include things like materials and and modulation to ensure that there's, there's, the buildings are not at undifferentiated mass along the entire parcel. Next slide. There are context sensitivity examples, which include a step back from a neighboring residence, as I mentioned. Where these properties are but R1 properties, the buildings need to step back at the angle mentioned, stated in this standard. And I'm happy to answer any questions in more detail, should you have any. Next slide. Then lastly, there's landscaping examples that have to do with what parking lots should, how they should be landscaped and and the street trees, mandated street trees along the street frontage. I think that concludes the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? I do have a speaker card. Maybe I can start with that. Simon Tan? Evening, Mr. Tan.
Hello. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
Greetings to the council. Yeah, I just wanted to say, as a longtime homeowner here and very interested resident, I am super supportive of this proposal, and I highly encourage that you adopt it. I think that that corridor, we, I'm basically a block away from Mission, and I, for, for so long, it's been the same for, you know, it hasn't developed in the way it could grow. And I think that the transit-rich corridor element is a very important part of it because there's so much potential for people to use transit more and that require cars and parking less. So yeah, so I'm fully supportive of it. I think it aligns with their longer-term goals of making Mission Street more of a grand boulevard. It enables more essential housing that we desperately need here and across the state. And is compliant with all the regulations as well. So yes, I just wanted to come here and say that I'm very supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Tan. Thank you for coming. All right, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. and Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that presentation by Placeworks and staff, all your hard work on this. I have one question. I, I know it says specifically that there was, the zoning did not align with the general plan. And so when did we approve the general plan change?
The general plan was adopted in 2013.
So it's 2013?
Yep.
Okay. So then my, I guess my question is, I know we're here where we're at now, but my question is, why didn't we have this sooner? Because if it was, it was 2013 when it was approved, it's like 10 years later. So I'd like to understand, like, what is the process there?
Well, much of it had to do with funding to get a consultant to do this, so we made our an application to get a state grant so that we could pursue this.
Okay, so, so we didn't have the funds. How much did it cost for us to get the consultant?
I think it, I think our, our contract was 250.
Yep.
Okay.
I think our contract was two, about 250K, and I, I don't think we've spent the entire amount.
I'm just wondering, because then that, if you, you know, if the general plan was approved, like, usually the next step is for us to move into the fruition of the general plan amendment that we would align the zoning. So that was, that's just, you know, my thought process of trying to understand why it took 10 years later from when we made that change. But we're here now. I think I am, you know, aligned with one of our residents that said, oh, you know, there's a huge opportunity for change and to be able to allow more housing in a corridor and really be able to push for more economic development, local economic development in the area. And so that was just one of my questions, and we're here now and really happy to see this aligned with the general plan. Can we, can you, I think this would be a staff and then also a Placeworks question. Do you see a rise in momentum of people wanting to build with this zone, zone change? Or do you see that it'll remain the same? For bo, both of you.
I'll jump in first. I think in, in this exact moment in time, I think there is a pause in development related to interest rates and construction costs. So I do think there's a slight pause, but cities that do have this type of zoning and have certainty for developers absolutely does encourage development. So we do think that once the dust settles on some of the financial situations that are going on in the general Bay Area and California market, that we will see development occur.
Thank you. I mean, I, I just, I'm glad this is here now. I feel like because we did it 10 years later, there, we did lose out on some potential development that could have occurred within that time span, because there was a spur of development in other jurisdictions. And so I don't want us to miss the next cycle, and so I'm glad we are at this juncture today. And so I think, you know, I think it's, I think we, we need this. We know that we have now a mandate around building more affordable housing. We've been really great at that as a city. I think, you know, I commend the city of Daly City for always, we're being, we're a dense city already, but you know, as far as affordable housing, looking at opportunities to build more for most, those most in need, we definitely try to do that. But I think this is a huge opportunity now. As you mentioned, there is definitely a pause around development. But now hopefully with this, we will be prepped for the next cycle. And then I leave you the opportunity to respond.
Well, I think many cities end up with a general plan that doesn't necessarily align, and it takes everyone quite a while to, to get the, the zoning ordinance aligned fully with the general plan. So it's not unusual at all that, that this has happened in this case. But I do see a lot of opportunity for, for Daly City. You've got a great, the, the corridors are both vibrant. They could be better, and I think that you will see a lot of good development coming forward.
Thank you.
Can I, what is the, the trend about when, when we're talking about plans like this? And the parking, how, what is the trend about whether or not there's still an insistence on certain number of spots, or is that going away? Are they moving away from that, forcing people to not?
The, the state law says that, you know, in, in an effort to streamline housing, because parking is expensive, that jurisdictions can't restrict, can't mandate parking for a project. However, what we see is that most developers, because they have to market their project, and they have to sell units or rent units, they will often develop the amount of parking that they feel is needed to make their project work. So we are not seeing very many projects in most cities that I work in that don't have parking provided. This is a state law that enables streamlining, but so far it's the developers that are driving the, the parking that is being provided on these projects. And they are typically right now developing them at about a, a parking space per unit. I think most developers see that as being more or less a standard.
What's our transportation issue like on Mission Street now? I mean, is it just all, it's, it's the bus, the Samtrans?
Yes, Samtrans, and then Muni does meet up at the north end, so it is a transit-rich corridor. And then many of the parcels are close to BART as well, because we have the BART station at John Daly and in Colma. So there's even access to BART.
I think I asked this question last time about slowing the traffic down to, to see if that would have an effect on, on, on that corridor, whether or not it would increase business or the viability of more, more robust area. What do you think about that?
Yeah, that was a good point, and I do agree that having traffic not speeding down the corridor would be beneficial to business. Having the foot traffic as well will be beneficial to, for businesses along the corridor, for sure. Now, our plan was looking at the private parcels on either side of the corridor, so we did not do a plan for the street itself. There are ways, and I think the city has implemented some or is considering some ways, but there are ways to help slow the, the traffic down and accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, and that is by providing better crossings, and that will typically slow the traffic a little bit, and there's other, there's other measures you can do to both increase the aesthetics of a boulevard as well as, you know, kind of slow traffic down, which could be beneficial.
What about the idea of having, this probably sounds counterintuitive, but open space for more recreation along the corridor rather than building? Does that defeat the purpose? Does that attract more, more robust development there? What, what do you think about that?
You, you know, we, well, it's interesting, and Tatum, you can hop in too, but when we were looking for a test-fit sites, we were looking at parcels that were city-owned, and there aren't very many. And so we, we did a test-fit on one of the parcels, it's a set of parcels that the city owns at Bepler, is it? And other than that, I don't think we really see a lot of opportunity for city-owned parcels. Now, if you're talking about privately-owned parcels, then that's, you know, real, that's a financial struggle to, to acquire the land and then develop the, which is why we, we do have this standard which requires for, it's not a great amount of publicly accessible open space, but there is a requirement for some additional open space for properties that are larger than an acre. So hopefully we'll get some amount of new park and open space. That wouldn't be recreational, because we're talking about kind of 1,000 square feet plaza, you know, type development there. But I think there, there may be another opportunity for additional open space. If you think of, if, if Cal Palace ever redeveloped, then that's an opportunity to insist that there be some kind of open space provided as part of that project. So that's a total aside, but you could think, think about that.
Great, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dr. Oh, Dr. Rod, go ahead.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a, thank you for the great presentation. You know, I'm a fan of Placeworks. So as we, as we go forward, have you seen, since some of the bills, we have so many bills, state bills, that like you said, there are no gray areas. But in the streamlining process, which I'm sure Ms. Mother said, those bills have already been implemented, is that, do you think that's enough incentive to try to get the developers to build? And are there any things that you know of, or probably, we don't know if there's more bills next week, not even when they go back to session, January, that will give incentives for people to build? Because developers, because the private developers, like you said, and if they want to leave an open space or whatever, and they can work with our ECD and yourself, then maybe there, that the state can provide some incentives is what I'm hoping for these people to realize. We want to create a community. We just don't want to build housing where people just come in. We want to create something vibrant. And I see how you've integrated a lot of different things to try to give aesthetics to put it in there, so that people can feel they're coming home, you know? They're not just coming to a place where they put their head down, get up, go to work. You want them to really enjoy being with their neighbors, get to know the people that are, that have been living here for a long time, like the gentleman spoke. And because they also would be very welcoming to create the community, the community that we all think of. I know we're not going back to the days of where people think about, you know, the playing in the front yard, like in the Westlake area, but there are ways we can work, if we can work with Placeworks and with our Ms. Mother's Head, and think out of the box, and think of things that we can create to make it more quality of life for the people, while we're still trying to meet the needs. But at the same time, give them, and I want them to feel like they're home in Daly City. They're not in a box, and that they don't have to be secluded. And that, that visionary of the cultures and whatever we can do to, to bring in businesses. Like, you know, some of the places that fill the retail, and I know you have great ideas as well, and our ECD with Ms. Mother's Head and Ms. Manio. So I'm looking forward to it. I think this is an opportunity, and I know we have to deal with some of these bills. I know that some of our local legislators are trying to, we're trying to let them know, yes, we hear you, but we also need to know about our own communities. And we have, each have a different flavor in each different city, and we don't want to make it like a cookie cutter for, for the people, you know? So yes, we hear you. Yes, we build, and we are Daly City, and we have always done that. But we want to, we can curtail this and drive it, as I see a vision of what is good. And I know that years ago, there was a charrette of the Mission, in the Mission Street. It's an old, old charrette. I get it. But, and things are done differently now. But just to have that vision and figure out, I know that at the legal cities, there were tons of revitalization areas that we can figure out how to work with those partners, that I know that Placeworks knows them as well from the legal from the legal cities, and to help us, you know, figure out, how can we revitalize and keep the quality of life and keep the people and move in that direction, to have a vision, not just somebody coming in and throwing up seven stories and and moving in that direction. So just put it out there, and but I know, and I welcome, thank you for being here. And Ms. Motherhead, thank you for working with them, and I'm glad that you guys have a a great partnership, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, great comment, I totally agree.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Sir, thank you for coming back. I have a few questions. First of all, the good parts. You've done outstanding work in in showing the progression, a chronological of as to what you've done for over, over a year. Uh, you've come to council before, and I really appreciate it, and you kept us up to date. What I'm particularly impressed is the community outreach, because I think it's very, very important, rather than us here at council trying to ram something down their throat. But at least the community has been made aware, and I'm hoping there'll be more community outreach as well. All right, now the questions I have. One of your slides you indicate to provide incentives or to incentivize owners. Wh- what sort of uh incentives are you going to provide a potential owner of a private parcel?
Well, there's, there's not like a monetary incentive or anything like that, it was more streamlining, so getting uh getting the the zoning so that it, the developer knows exactly what is expected, and then they can just move forward and know that it's going to be, uh, it's going to move forward and it won't be tied up, you know? So I think that's an incentive.
Right. You indicated C dash MU, commercial dash mixed use. Along that corridor right now, uh, can you give me some designations of some of the properties along the corridor? Wh- what are they designated now as?
Well, they're all designated CMU um in the general plan. But the zoning code, being older, it um gives them a a zone of C1, which is commercial, which does not allow for residential. Or, okay, you better clarify.
We 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 said that the CMU zone is to better align with the CMU zoning uh general plan designation, but just to kind of go back to the point of, the C1 zoning was not completely out of conformance with the general plan. C1 zoning did allow residential, however, it required a use permit and a public hearing process. So to the council's credit, any projects that have been brought forward to the council that incorporated housing have always been approved by the council. The council has always shown a record of supporting housing. CMU just creates a zoning designation that is better aligned. It acknowledges residential as an allowed use by right, that it's not a subjective use, but rather allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So along the corridor, if I own two parcels there, and it's currently a residential parcel, and I own two of them, this is just a example. And if I wanted to rebuild, being classified as a C dash MU, would I be prohibited from replacing those two units with two uh new units of higher density? Because of the zoning, C dash MU?
The the regulations do provide um some for non-conforming uses. So a single-family home will become a non-conforming use. However, we will honor a single-family home if it was built prior to the enactment of this ordinance. So if, for example, your single-family home burns down, you would be able to rebuild it and not have to comply with the CMU standards. But if you want to rebuild it to something more intense, you could also use the CMU zoning standards for new development.
In your slide presentation, you mentioned uh potential designs for parking lots. Where will we put a parking lot?
Well, some of the bigger sites could have, you know, mo- most of these projects will probably have podium parking. But some of the bigger sites could have parking behind. There, they would not be allowed on the street side of a building, but they could be behind the building. And therefore, there's some landscaping standards if that should happen.
What do you mean, behind the building? This would be a commercial mixed-use building, where you probably have retail on the bottom floor and residences on the top, so you may allow parking on the backside?
Yeah, you could. There, there could be parking allowed back behind.
Okay, uh, you also spoke of, basically, it's Assembly Bill 2097, which pertains to the city having to enforce a certain amount of parking spaces based upon, I guess, square footage. And that's a law that has passed, saying that if a developer comes in, they don't have to worry about those. Well, as you made mention, they could probably put something in, and maybe if you want to buy a unit, uh, you can buy the parking space that has been uh a a um developed. However, say, maybe a 50-unit building, to which reasonably one parking space per unit, and uh now as per AB 2097, you can streamline the process and say, nope, you don't even have to offer one parking space per unit. Is that correct?
That is correct. So if it's within one-half mile of um quality transit, then no parking um is required. But I think, as Bruce had mentioned previously, I think along this corridor, I think it'd be very unlikely that you would find the provision of zero parking, because I think there's still in Daly City a marketability of having a development that provides parking. But yes, we would be superseded by the state in requiring the parking.
Could I just add one thing to that, and that is, that law exists, it's a state law that exists irregardless of our project. If we were here or if we weren't here, you would still have that parking requirement waived, yeah.
Well, uh, well, I, yeah, not a problem, but uh there's not one situation that fits everyone. And that's what I'm concerned about, because Daly City is dense. We got a potential project that's coming up, and it's going to be all studios. And uh, there's not going to be one parking space for each, each one of those units, and that's what I'm concerned about. That's what I'm alluding to. But Senate Bill 2097 also says that uh exceptions can be made in the case for disabled parking and electric vehicles. And I'm wondering if that's going to be factored into uh any particular development that comes, comes along down the pipe?
Uh, I don't, you, so we don't have a provision in the code for requiring accessible parking spaces, but I'm not sure if state law, or federal law, ADA re- requirements include a re- uh, a minimum for uh accessible parking spaces.
My understanding is that ADA spaces that are um required are usually based on the total being provided, so it's a ratio.
Yeah, but that's not answering my my question. I'm I'm reading AB 2097, and it says uh 20% affordable units or with fewer, fewer than 20% housing units could not be required to provide parking, except for disabled persons and electric vehicles, even if those findings were made. That's on page four.
So this is a a state law that would apply to um the entire city and all cities in California. So we could come up with some policy clarification. This um zoning designation is identifying the parking requirements that are already in, existing in our zoning ordinance, unless there is um a waiver that can be applied through state law. So this proposal isn't changing the amount of parking required. It just acknowledges that there are state laws where parking can be waived.
Thank you, because as these projects come before council, and uh I'm looking out for the community interest, because they're probably going to bring this up, and some, and what I'm hearing is that our hands are tied. But I want the community to know that there are certain provisions that can change, or perhaps in us trying to adhere to state law, that we can uh, uh, there's things that we can do. For instance, ability to meet the community's arena for low and very low-income households or on special housing needs of the elderly or disabled persons or existing residential or commercial parking within a half-mile of housing development projects. That means it says, however, a city or county may require parking if it finds a preponderance of the evidence. And that's on page five. So I just wanted to bring that uh point out. Those are a couple of my concerns. And as I had made mention, item number eight, to which uh a statement was made that we did not have to reach out to the community, because state law says we don't have to reach out to the community. But I'm saying, why not? I think uh to at least provide that information to the community would have gone a long way. Because, but we'll worry about item number eight when it comes up. So let me see, parking lot, private parcels. So we do have a few private parcels here in Daly City. Has anybody reached out to those owners of private parcels and indicate to them that uh there might be a possible zone change to CMU, and why this is better? At least reach out to them and let them know that this is coming down the pipe. Has that been done?
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, we held a stakeholder meeting. Uh, we invited property owners to the stakeholder meeting. Uh, they've been notified of all the community meetings, as well as this meeting, uh, this evening. Just um for the council's information, we notified all the property owners within the CMU zone and all property owners within 300 feet of the proposed CMU zone. So we sent out over 1,500 public notices.
All right, well, uh, my final comment is, I want to say job well done. Um, until I got more clarity and information as to how we would move forward, you just uh basically swayed my vote on this matter, and I want to say job well done. Thank you very much. No further questions.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just one.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, in addition to that, I just want to let the public know, and as a reminder, that when they, when you guys did the outreach to the landowners, and just see if they were interested, um, we were availed to to listen into that, to see which ones were interested. And I believe uh it was Michael Van Lokenhausen and and Ms. Motherhead and yourself that led that, and it was very interesting, and the way they did it, you're right, they did a job well done. It was outstanding that um what you guys did to engage, and that the property owners were very open, and some were maybe thinking about it, but it planted the seed, and some were very positive. And then um I'm gonna say that I was very impressed to that type of outreach. And I believe it, that in some of the state laws, that is the, if I could be corrected, that it's the new laws are saying that the developer does not have to do the outreach as a way, some of that, to make it streamlined. That was part of the, the, um, I can't remember which Senate bill it is, but one of them. But anyway, but thank you, job well done. I agree. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
So one last question I have is, and I think that um community engagement is crucial, especially when um doing large plans, as mentioned. Um, you said that you had um a meeting in August, and it was well-attended. I was just wondering how many people attended that meeting?
I think it was 30, you were here, right? Uh, about 30 or maybe a couple more than that.
Like, around 30? Okay, just wondering.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, I think this is long overdue, um, you know, and that um it's important for us to move forward so that um progress is continued, and that um there are opportunities for housing, for economic development, and um really to have a future-facing um opportunities for local uh development that is centered around community needs, and also just um, yeah, having, you know, healthy spaces, more amenities for our residents, um, as well as uh providing um more opportunities for small businesses on ground floors, um, and hopefully more housing in our community that is affordable for all, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none, this hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
Motion.
All right.
Second.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. This is an ordinance of the city of Daly City, adding chapter 17.58, Commercial Mixed Use CMU District to the Daly City Municipal Code, and amending the zoning map. Rezoning various parcels of approximately 65 acres located on Mission Street and Geneva Avenue from C1 light commercial to commercial mixed use CM, C, CM, CMU.
Thank you, Madam Senior Attorney. Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy to do so.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All, all right, roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Ms. Sylvester?
Ms. Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good work, everybody. Item number nine, which is the appropriate funds and award of construction contact for the Bay Shore Community Center Generator Project. Dr. Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
I'm gonna turn this over to Jeffrey Nacy, who will give the report.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Um, the item before you is uh to appropriate funds and award a construction contract for the Bay Shore Community Center Generator Project. Um, staff recommends the city council appropriate 100,000 of unallocated general fund for the Bay Shore Community Center Generator Project. Accept all bids and award a construction contract to SCC Electric, Inc. of Nevada, California, in the amount of 245,000 for the subject project, and authorize city manager or his design, designate to execute the contract to complete the project. On May 23rd, 2022, city council approved a resolution 2277, accepting and appropriating a California State Library-targeted, state-funded grant. The grant provided funding for two sites, Ceremony Library and the Bay Shore Library. The Bay Shore Library um project includes electrical upgrades and the emergency generator replacement, and it was allocated 200,000 of the grant funds. The emergency generator at the Bay Shore Community Center was installed to ensure a continuous power supply during power outages, enabling the facility to operate critical functions such as lighting, heating, and cooling. Completion of this project would enable these critical functions in the uh Bay Shore Community um library, Bay Shore Library. Providing a safe and functional environment for the community during power outages. The project was advertised on September 26th, 2023. On October 19th, 2023, five contractors attended a mandatory pre-proposal meeting at the Bay Shore Community Center. And on October 24th, 2023, two bids were received by the city. The two bids and the engineer's estimate are summarized as follows. SCC Electric, Inc., 245,000. Vogel Brothers Construction, 248,340 dollars, or 248,340 dollars, and the engineer's estimate was 250,000 for construction. The total estimated uh cost of this subject project is 300,000, which includes the 245,000 construction contract and an additional 55,000 for construction contingency, which is set at 15% inspection and administration costs. Two hundred thousand is available in Fund Thirty-One CIP Project Account Number Thirty-One Three-One Three-Six-Five-Four. An additional hundred thousand is needed from unallocated general fund to fully fund this project. This action will appropriate a hundred thousand of unallocated general fund to fund the Bay Shore Community Center Generator Project. In summary, staff recommends the city council appropriate the funds from unallocated general fund to fully fund the, the project, accept all bids, award a construction contract to SCC Electric, Inc. of Nevada, California in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, and authorize city manager or his designate to execute the contract to complete this project. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by mayor or members of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fornasi. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Fornasi. You ready?
Absolutely.
P S P S. How often has that occurred here at the Bay Shore Library?
I can't recall those numbers off the top of my head, but I could get that information for you and, uh, send it to you.
Once a month? Twice a year? Three times a year?
It's probably less than that.
Less than that?
Yes. Uh, for our area, um, for the most part, we haven't been impacted by P S.
And when you have been impacted, how long was the power out for?
The only thing I can, I don't know on the P S, uh, what was it? The P S, P S?
P S, Public Safety Power Shut-Off.
Yes, P S.
P G N E.
I do know that last year during the storms, we lost power over there for, uh, I think it was three days.
Uh, what type of generator would you, uh, are we looking at here?
It's a diesel, um, generator, uh, manufactured by Kohler.
So operates on diesel, so that would require fuel?
It does, yes.
Diesel fuel. And any idea as to the maintenance, as to how often would you have to fill it, fill it up? I mean, it's based upon usage and...
Based upon usage, um, I believe it has a twenty-four hour runtime. In maintenance, we do annual load test and we do monthly, um, inspections and, and, and we test, and we run the generator for half an hour.
Okay, thank you. Um, this generator will provide electricity in the case of a brownout, a shutdown of power, so that, uh, Bay Shore Community Center Library can continue to function?
Yes, it, um, it is designed to provide power during P S P Ss, during, you know, long-term power outages. It will provide a place for the community to go to in the event of a, uh, a larger outage in that general area. So currently, the Bay Shore Library is not, um, part of the generator, um, distribution, electrical distribution. Um, so it would, in, in the event of a power outage, there would be, uh, it would not be a place that the community can go to in the library. The Bay Shore Community Center has power, but not the library.
So this is for...
However, this project will, will change that so that it will provide power for the library. Yes.
Okay. Have we looked, have we thought of the possibility of a power wall?
We've looked at power walls for, and we're currently looking at power walls. Uh, we have not for this project specifically.
Well, to my understanding, power walls are generally about nine thousand dollars each. Looks like it can provide a up to three to five hour runtime based upon the amount of electricity that's being used in kilowatts. And you made mention that this generator can run for a twenty-four hour, uh, runtime. However, I guess what we're paying for is not only the generator, but the, uh, the installation and electrical, and especially union electrical, they're very expensive, it's very expensive work, but I'm just thinking, and I'm just thinking of a much cleaner sort of, uh, for sustainability rather than the use of diesel. Could that be a possibility? I mean, when there's no power outage, those batteries are, state of charge is, is high just as long as, uh, and the kilowatts is much cheaper than using diesel fuel.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sylvester, um, first of all, um, of the dollar amount, two hundred and forty-five thousand, a, a lot of that is for, uh, electrical panel work, also in terms of, uh, transfer switches, things like that, which would also still be needed
Right.
with a, with a power wall or a battery-type system. With that being said, uh, as you may recall, we are looking into battery storage for some of our, uh, facilities, um, namely, we're gonna be looking at it for City Hall as well as War Memorial, uh, in addition to some of the other facilities that were slated to, um, uh, get solar, um, in terms of those facilities. Bay Shore Community Center, uh, as we were working with Peninsula Clean Energy, I don't recall, I don't think that was one of the facilities that was, um, seemed to have made sense for solar at the time. So with that being said, we are looking at it, um, battery walls. It's a, it's a new type of system, uh, and we will be trying it out. But it made more sense to kind of focus primarily on the facilities that were slated to get solar, uh, in addition to City Hall as well as War Memorial, um, Community Center.
You know what, Mr. Chu? That was an outstanding answer. Because I do recall that we have a few places in Daly City slated for, uh, the potential move to sustainable energy and also the investigation that, uh, this particular area was probably not feasible for solar because I purposely left that out. Because basically the power, a power wall, rather than pulling energy or electricity from the grid, it's good to pull it from solar. So you basically answered the question. Thank you very much. No further.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I think this item is extremely important when you talk about, um, a safety net, um, and just being able to have, um, that type of emergency response. And so I think that having a generator for, especially in the Bay Shore Community Center, um, is, is crucial. I think it's a necessity, um, and I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Doctor, uh, pardon me, doctor, Mr. Sylvester?
Ms. Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's go on to appointments. Thank you.
Board Commission, Membership Committee appointments, any appointments? I do have an appointment. I'd like to appoint Tony Bayudan. I have a vacancy on the Personnel Board, so I'm making a motion to apport, appoint Tony Bayudan to the Personnel Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. He is appointed. Any other Board Commission, Membership Committee appointments? Hearing none. Let's go on to reports, Council Committee Reports. Any Council Committee Reports? Go ahead, Dr. Rod.
All right, so I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting slash Retreat on November sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. Um, we were, um, was facilitated by a group called Portero Group. And they, they was, uh, used as a consulting group to do an organizational assessment, which focused on five different things. So one was what does, and/or should growth mean look like to P C E in five to seven years? So they looked at electricity, they looked at customer input or impact, um, in industry and slash market impact. Um, another segment that they looked at was, um, organizational assessment. What does the organization want in terms of the staff, directors, and everything? And then Segment Three was on procurement priorities, looking at how and what does clean energy look like for our county and how are we gonna get it? I think one thing that stood out to me was not only is P C E, um, purchasing, um, solar from solar, um, farms across California, but then there's also this, um, new movement around ocean energy that's been, been used in Europe and I, I believe somewhere in the East Coast. And they're beginning to have these conversations, or I think they're already planning it. It's gonna be, they're gonna start using, um, ocean energy around Channel Islands, around the Oxnard area. And then another place in, around Northern California. So that's gonna be coming down the pipeline to, um, provide more cleaner energy and more, um, additional energy that can be used, um, for our county throughout California. That was also play a role in this, this segment number four about decarbonization. One of the critiques about decarbonization by twenty thirty-five was, can they really reach it by twenty thirty-five? And the answer was no, but the good thing is, is that they can probably have like ninety-seven percent, but not really ninety-nine or a hundred, but I'd rather take the ninety-seven than... It's like getting an A, an A minus, right? So, you know, I'll take the A minus. Um, and then there was this understanding about how do, how do we create this customer-centered approach to, uh, P C E? And then I raised up the question like, okay, we can talk about customer-centered, but I would like to see a shift towards a human-centered approach. So that, you know, P C E is still a young organization. And it's not on everybody's radar unless they look at their P G E bill and they look at it and like, oh, what's this P C E rate? So we're trying to find ways to expand the brand, um, contact relationships, um, networks, even going to community events. So those are things that, um, are up in store and up the pipeline for P C E.
Good.
That's, that's it for me.
Great. Good report. Any other Council Committee Reports? Hearing none. Let's go on to City Council Reports. City Council Reports. Madam Vice Mayor?
Oh, we could go after.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. D. Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I was trying to defer. Thank you. I just wanted to say that, that, well, you know, I see Sheila here and I saw Denise and our city manager was there and as long as our vice mayor with the top of the hill at our library, uh, John Daly, which is, uh, a grant given by the humanities. And I do hope it continues. The, the food, I have to say, I would like to have an assessment. I'm sure this is act, out of the box, but we really have a wide variety of food and that more and more are coming here and opening up. Like the halal, that food was also outstanding, something that we normally don't have. And like in San Francisco and Burlingame or whatever. I ask people, stop and think about what we have here on Mission, right in our own little top of the hill of the area. We have, many cultures are being represented and some of those were being represented there that night. Uh, they were all outstanding. Um, as always, it was raining, which is a good news, but, uh, Commissioner Nancy Rodriguez was there and, and it was packed with people. And it was, um, very positive. And our librarian, I mean, I don't know what else ideas they can come up with, but thank you Sheila for supporting your employees because that says a lot as well as you, being such a wonderful, um, running our libraries with our staff, how you take care of them and how you let them create what they wanna create and that you're very supportive, as well as our city manager was there supporting them as well. And that, um, look forward to more. So that was just like, can this be ongoing? I mean, but it does, it exposes them and gives them the, cause then you think about, oh, what would I like to have today? And there's still other restaurants in that same vicinity that are clamoring to participate at that great library. So, um, I wanna thank all of you for that. It was fantastic. And, um, so that's it for that right now. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, uh, want, uh, to report out for, um, the City Council Report that, um, I joined the Daly City Age Friendly Task Force. We had a meeting, um, it's actually the quarter meal, quarterly meeting, that, uh, was really wonderful to have, um, Anne Kegren, who, um, heads up, um, the age-friendly kind of, uh, the, the overall county, um, support for older adults. Um, we also had, um, Kita Perla Ibrantos there. I wanna acknowledge the staff, um, um, that, uh, participated and also continue to provide input to ensuring that we do have an age-friendly city, for those that are older adults and for those that, you know, one day will be older adults. And so we wanna really see in a holistic approach to that. Um, and then with that, I, I wanna announce that on, uh, December seventh, we will be having, um, uh, a task, uh, actually a town hall, uh, for the Age Friendly Action Plan. So for those of you who are watching, please, um, uh, let us know and participate. But it's an opportunity, um, to really, um, share input. Um, and then also wanted to, um, acknowledge, um, Selena, you know, from the Daly, uh, Daly City Library Staff, who continued to do the Taste of Top of the Hill, and really were able to, um, bring forth, um, some small businesses. Some of them I've tried, some of them I haven't. And so Roses Alfarores, International Halal, Greek Market, Via Mare, Bart Grocery. I mean, these are all small businesses just around top of the hill area. So thank you to Cal Humanities, um, and all of the staff for that really wonderful event. That was well a part, uh, but huge participation. And really, um, the community appreciated. You saw that. And so I also wanted to share that, um, I went to the Ninth Annual CalNet with the Asian Pacific Islander Leadership Foundation, um, Retreat, um, that happened, um, last week. Um, and at that retreat, um, there was, uh, Boston Mayor Michelle Wu, Cincinnati Mayor Aftad Purival. We had also our local, um, state officials, Assembly Member Phil Ting, also Attorney General Rob Banta, um, but really, um, brought, um, A P I, both appointed and elected, um, leaders up and down California. I also wanted to share that I intended Basca's twentieth anniversary along with City Manager Tom Piccolati, who I believe probably sat in all of the twenty years there on that board. I have to acknowledge that. And so, um, pretty amazing for all those twenty years. For those of you watching, you know, Basca is really created to ensure that we have a reliable water supply, high-quality water, and, um, most importantly, at a fair price. And at that event, um, we were graced with Assembly, uh, Woman Diane Papin, um, that was there. Also wanted to share that, um, I also, uh, joined the one hundred fifty-third anniversary of the Crocker Amazon Lodge, which, uh, is just right there at top of the hill. Really grateful for their invitation, um, to celebrate their one hundred fifty-third anniversary. And on, um, Give Thanks or Thanksgiving Day, um, I joined the Capo Cultural Center. They did their first annual, I mean, it's not their first, cause they actually did it virtually, but first in-person, uh, community walk. And it started out at Shift, um, Chiropractic in Westlake. And they walked all the way to Lake Merced, not the whole Lake Merced, just, just the little, that little turnabout. There was about, um, over a hundred people with their families and children. So it was really wonderful to be in community and to see everyone, um, early in the morning to support, uh, a youth organization and social enterprise, but also support their wellness and well-being. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Any other City Council Reports? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to first start off, uh, last month, I had the opportunity through the Council of Cities to attend the location in South San Francisco with their new building, library, parks, and recreation. in South San Francisco with their new building, library, parks and recreation.
Yeah, it was great.
And I passed by it so many times and looking at it from the outside, it doesn't appear to be much. But when it, when the, when the sun goes down, complete transformation. I wonder who the architect was that on that building. To my understanding, uh, South San Francisco residents passed a bond to build that building many years ago to the tune of a hundred and three million dollars. And when I attended the meeting, you just look up and the, the architecture is, is just at the sky. You're just looking at it, it's clear blue sky with clouds. They have their own dining room and I was told that their reorg will be hand, will be at that location. And then I had the opportunity to look at the council chamber. And to my understanding, the stage expands. And then the library passed that information on to my kids and they're almost there three times a week, especially with the big play area that they have. And South San Francisco is doing pretty well and I know we can do, do so also. That is why the master plan is so important. You, you know, I would really like to see something happen at, uh, Westlake Dolger area to include building an auditorium and maybe a three-story building to house some city agencies, but it's just a thought. If you ever get a chance, just drive down El Camino after five P M. And as you drive, you'll be in marvel as to what you see if you're going southbound, what you see on your left. The other, uh, Thanksgiving Day, we always ask ourselves, what are we thankful for? So Thanksgiving Day, I went down to Chinatown and through the Love and Care Foundation, along with Senator Weiner, Fiona Ma, and Anders Fung of Milbrae, we distributed over six hundred red envelopes to those who are in need of assistance. And knowing the person who's giving out the envelopes, it's not five dollars in those envelopes. I would say maybe anywhere from thirty to fifty dollars. And it was about six hundred people there in line. You know, I got tired of standing, so I just, I told them I was leaving. Oh, I had Miss Chinatown there as well. And as I was leaving, I was walking to my car and as I left the park, I looked to my left, I looked to my right, and I looked down the block for a full city block. It was still lined up with people. So that made me realize the thankfulness and to not forget those who are less fortunate. So that's what I did on my Thanksgiving Day and, uh, uh, really had a good sense, uh, back to reality, cause sometimes we forget. So that's all I have at this time and I thank you very much.
Just real quick, I just wanna add in addition to, so the Crocker Lodge not only had their hundred fifty-third anniversary, they also, um, had the Harem Awardee, and I wanna thank the Daily City P D and our Acting Chief and Brennan for allowing, uh, for our P D to stop by and they actually came into the area and were well-received and were able to take a picture with the, um, I think he has it on his phone, you might wanna see, uh, right inside the Crocker Lodge, which very few people are allowed. You have to be asked for permission, but of course, they welcome our Daily City P D all the time. They tried to give him food, but he said he had to go to the Cow Palace. Um, I believe there was another event going on as there, uh, always is, but it really meant a lot, so please relay that if you will, Brennan. And, um, so I wanted to know that it just keeps going. And I have to say that Councilmember Sylvester is right that the architecture is right by the police, their, their new police station, the same architects that did their brand-new South City, uh, police building did the same, um, created the other one. But of course, their bond was in two thousand thirteen, the percentage was lower when they did their bond. So it's been many years since, since they, they've done that. But, you know, we are blessed with what we have and I think that with what we have, we have taken it and embraced it and done, it's the programs, it's the people for me. And even though that's, it is beautiful and they have great librarians, great programs as well, but I, when I wa- when I come here and I see all the faces in the different parts of our community, cause we have so many different libraries, it's a different, it's a different thing. But I love them all and we, I know that you also know the librarians over there, Shayla, um, because they, they speak highly of you and your librarians. And, um, so whatever they have over there, we can also, we do, actually we do, we have our three D printer and hopefully we'll be getting the sewing machines, hopefully as well, because people are asking, they'll be lending out the sewing machines as well and all the parts of the county. So I think it's about working together as partners and, uh, many people come there and we go there and that's the way it should be. So I appreciate everything that all of you do and everyone. So being thankful and grateful for everyone here in the city, um, and everything that you do, that's what makes this city a great city. So thank you, being grateful.
Okay, any other City Council? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in, in looking at the future, I think we have, um, a wonderful opportunity. It may not, uh, be in the near future, but I think that we are taking the steps on looking at a feasibility of really being able to look at a modern design at Westlake. And, you know, I think that's something that, um, we have a huge parcel of land there. Um, I know that, you know, we, we are, um, happy for our neighbors in South San Francisco for what they've been able to accomplish. But I think, you know, we are a bedroom community. We do not have the biotech funds like they do, but you know what? We have something on the horizon. And something on the horizon that we have is that we are looking at the feasibility of looking at a state-of-the-art, um, community place that, um, you know, mm, the future generation will see. You know, do, we know that development takes time, but having that vision for the future, it's, it's here. And I am very optimistic that we will have something, um, that is futuristic, that, um, will, you know, meet the time that we're in. Um, but that takes time. But the vision is there, the willpower is there. And I think that, um, you know, as we look towards the well-being of our communities, for our older adults, for our youth and young people, um, being ha- able to have some central social services there. I mean, I think that, that's something on the horizon. And so as we look to our neighbors, I think that we also should be very, very, very proud that we have a vision, um, in plan to see something come to fruition. And so I, that is me looking at my optimistic lens. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, actually on that note, maybe I can turn to Mr. Piccolati to give us a little tease.
Yeah, I can. We've, uh, we discussed it in the budget set, through the mayor, through the chair. We discussed in our budget sessions that we're looking at, um, the revitalization of the Dolger Center and, and some of the surrounding parcels and how we can create a community center there. Interviewing architects to give us some rendering, so we are moving forward with that. It, it, it will be a a, an extensive effort, but I think that it's something that we're gonna see come to fruition in the next couple of years.
Great. Thank you for that.
And I will keep the council apprised as we move forward.
Yeah, I know you're very excited about that, Mr. Piccolati, and, uh, I, I can't wait to see what happens. Meeting goes well with the architects. Okay, any other City Council reports? Hearing none, any staff report?
Yeah, just real, uh, I, lots already been said, but I would like to say that I, and thank Daisy from Moonstar for providing Thanksgiving meals to both the fire, uh, fighters that were on staff and the police officers that were on staff on that day. They, they, they came and provided meals to all those that were working, so just wanted to point that out.
Great.
That's great.
Okay, um, let's, uh, go on to the adjournment. Um, let me start off by adjourning in memory of Don Horsley. Don Horsley was the former San Mateo County Sheriff and Board of Supervisors member who died Friday morning, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at the age of eighty. Don was a juvenile counselor, teacher and beat cop whose early days in both San Francisco and Daily City shaped his later work. He attended Westmore High School in Daily City and San Francisco State University, where he received a bachelor's degree in nineteen sixty-nine. After work as a counselor for the San Mateo County Probation Department and as a middle school teacher, he began work as a police officer for the Pacifica Police Department, followed by the Sheriff's Office in nineteen seventy-two, serving as an East Palo Alto Patrol Deputy. He was elected sheriff in nineteen ninety-three, served for fourteen years and retired in two thousand and seven. During his time as sheriff, Don started the San Mateo County Sheriff's Activities League, a program to develop relationships between law enforcement and youth through tutoring, playing sports and other activities. Don was elected to the Sequoia Healthcare District Board of Directors and then the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. His priorities included improving mental health services, expanding access to county parks and open spaces, curbing gun violence, providing more beds and services to those experiencing homelessness and improving emergency preparedness. He was known as a tireless defender of the coast and actively worked on farm worker assistance and parks and youth programs as District Three Representative on board. He was re-elected twice and retired in twenty twenty-two. Um, let me now turn to Councilmember DiGiovanni for her adjourned memory.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me begin by saying, um, heartfelt condolences for Fabian Boy Gagaza, was born in Quezon City, Philippines on October the twenty-fourth, nineteen forty-nine. He was the third child of seven siblings, uh, Fabler Senior and ex U S Army and Anna Gagaza, both deceased. They call him Boy. Boy migrated to San Francisco and Daily City in nineteen seventy-six. His first job was in Alaska before he moved here at the Sheridan Hotel. He also worked at the Fisherman's Wharf. He and his wife Lourdes in Daily City got married March twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-six at the age of thirty-seven. He took his full retirement in two thousand seventeen. His biggest passion was traveling. His first trip was to the, was it Fr- Francis Gar- oh, the Garbo's Holy Land Pilgrimage and two thousand fifteen succeeded by more travels to Fatima, Eastern Europe, Santorini, Greece, Grand Asia Cruise, Moscow, Bahamas of Mexico and Hawaii. Boy was an avid fan of the Bay Area sports teams, of course, the Giants, the Niners and especially Warriors. They enjoyed being with all his nieces and nephew and sharing time with them. He was known to be very quiet and reserved, but his quietness is what showed his love. He was a, as he, despite the cancer that hit him three months ago by surprise at stage four, he still continued his daily walks in Geralt Park, reached about with his one, ten thousand steps daily, which might have helped him to prolong his life while continuing chemo for almost these year. His pain, he never complained. So he's gone so fast. He also lost another brother three months prior to this from the same type of cancer. So with those heartfelt condolences to his three siblings that are left out of seven, Zinni, Well and Ray, as well as his extended relatives, many who spoke about him last evening at his viewing with nothing but love. And they were saying, when we lose someone we love, we must learn not to live without them, but to live with the love that they left behind. And if respect, out of respect with our mayor, I'm sure he already mentioned it. But we all must wanna ma- acknowledge that Don was also inspired by mental health due to his grandmother and the conditions that he saw her in were cold and isolated and he wanted to change that. So he, along with the, um, our city manager here in the other two cities, he is the responsible one that took the lead that we now have the mental health clinician and in our pilot program. And he also began his law enforcement career right here in Daily City P D, which he talked about with many stories with love and laughter. He did the farmwork housing. He also did transitional housing, uh, breaking ground recently. And, uh, he has a great legacy and I thank the mayor for mentioning just some tonight, what we all know, what Don Horsley is about. And he never, he always did things with great heart and compassion. And as a law enforcement officer, people know him, even as a sheriff, when he would be on the street, just like other law enforcement, he would do kind acts of, kind, a lot of kind acts with individuals and especially those who are in need. So thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Chun Liang Chow, who was the maternal grandmother of Police Officer Kelly Brown. Um, any other adjourned memories? Go ahead, uh, Dr. Rock.
I'd like to adjourn the memory for the fifteen thousand Palestinians that have been killed in Gaza since October seventh. This includes over six thousand children and four thousand men. The death toll also encompasses medical personnel, journalists and members of the civil defense teams. The situation in Gaza has led to destruction of numerous buildings, including schools, mosques, churches and residential units. This conflict has resulted in significant number of injuries with over thirty-five thousand reported and has caused shortages of essential foods and food items. The ongoing violence has had a devastating impact on the region with thousands of lives lost and widespread destruction and I call for a ceasefire, um, and for those that are been affected um, and all the Palestinians, um, in that region.
Okay, for all those, we'd like to take a moment to adjourn in their memory. All right, this mem- meeting is adjourned, thank you.